Oh my gosh, can you tell? Hair just like flying off of it.
Jason is coming.
So who came first?
I see.
So I went by Bernie's place. And she had stuff all over. There's more stuff than there was before, and now it's falling into the sidewalk. I took a picture. She promised us that she was gonna do better.
Let's call the meeting to order, and I'd like you to call the order.
Mr. Bracken.
Here.
Ms. Franklin.
Here.
Ms. Ragoo.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mayor Snavely.
Here. Okay, we will now go to the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to join us, you may.
The Pledge of Allegiance, certified of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any corrections or changes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda is approved, we'll move to public participation. At this time, anyone who would like to address counsel on items that are not on the agenda, this would be your time to do so. If it's on the consent agenda, you can address it now as well. Just come forward and give us your name and where you live, and we'll give you five minutes.
Hello.
Hi, welcome.
My name's Gary Landrum. I reside at 1532 California Parkview Arms. And we were wanting to come up and bring a little notice to what's going on with Parkview Arms. And if there's any way we can get some help with the landlord, the property management. There's a lot of tenants living in filth.
You wanna use the microphone, because...
Living in filth, squander. And anytime we try to request help from the landlord and the maintenance, it's usually just a runaround. Most, most of your work orders have three copies. One that goes to the corporate, one that goes in the files, and then one for a tenant for copy. The tenant's never received one of these copies of the maintenance orders to prove any of the work has been done. And so, in reality, the work got done, there's no paper trail. And so where's the money going that they're using to fix all these issues? And if we could get the health, health inspectors, or city inspectors...
It should be on.
Hello.
There you go.
But if we could get the city inspectors, health inspectors, in to actually look at each apartment rather than the ones that the landlord says, let's look at these, not this one. They kind of bypass the bad. Pretty much that's it.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Maria Johnson.
I'm Mary Ann.
So I, I have three kids. I, did we move in February, I think? Yeah, we moved in, in February. So I've had problems with Lisa since I moved in. I'm not sure why. I've had to call legal aid on her. I had to call, I had to deal with self. She's, she's tried to make me pay two utility bills, according to legal aid is what it was. But the second one, she kept, she had tried to have me make it out to Parkview Arms under like an LLC or something. So I guess the money was going in her pocket. My, my apartment floods at least twice a week. That, it just flooded before we got here, I had to take pictures of it. I, I printed out, like, legal aid told me to print out papers for escrow to start putting my money into, because she won't, she won't fix it. She's never even there to, like, to address. I know job and family services is called, and then they, they've actually called me because they couldn't get a hold of her. Self and he couldn't get a hold of her. Legal aid has problems getting a hold of her. There's, what is that, Butler Behavioral Health? Yeah, they've tried to get a hold of her. She kind of just comes and circles the parking lot and leaves. And this, this lady looks like she's driving like a new 2024 type of car. So I think, I'm not understanding why we can't get anything fixed. And as soon as that fire happened a couple of days ago, everyone was outside talking about the same thing. The stove don't work, the, the fridges are either too small or they don't work, or, you know, they're not, they're, they're old, so they don't seal properly. So the food doesn't stay cold, like, the roaches, there's a constant roaches. Just a couple of days ago, I seen one or two bedbugs. There's a lady that didn't want to come in today, she's one of our neighbors. She has three babies.
And mold.
Yeah, the mold. Yeah, I have systemic lupus, my, my daughter has asthma. I just took her to the ambulance a couple of day, or through ambulance, through emergency a couple of days ago. The, the lady downstairs, she has three babies. She's been living there for, I think about four years. She asked them, asked Lisa if she could replace her carpet, because they didn't replace it, they kind of carpet cleaned it. As soon as she moved in, all the big black spots, all the mold, all the, everything came right back. And her, her kids are living in this, and she will not replace anything. And I think that's why she's not there, because of the complaints. Like, as soon as she's actually there, the office is packed, because there's so much problems. There's a, we have drug problems in the back of the building where the older people stay. There's just so many, the cops are there, cops, ambulance, maybe like twice a week. But, but no, it's like, every other day, actually, there's, there's something every other day. People are passing away back there, like, it's, it's crazy. We have people living in the back of the woods, so we have cops in the back of the woods. Like, around two or three in the morning, you hear them yelling at somebody to get down, you know, put your, get on the ground, there, there's always something. Like, we're, we just asked the school counselor, Talawanda Middle, Middle and High School, for the, the list for HUDHousing so we can move. But I came down to try to see what we could do, because nobody else is doing anything. And like, the, these places, this place is, it's nasty. It's like, I, I don't know what else to say, it's, it's bad.
Thank you very much.
Do I still have time?
You've got about a half a minute.
Half a minute. Back in 2013, I believe, Lieutenant Fleming?
Fenning.
I believe that, that's her name.
Fenning.
Fenning.
Fenning. She made a report, I believe it's either in the Miami Observer or to the Oxford Press when it was then. And this is 2013, saying something that needed to be done with PVA. So that was over 11 years ago, and all of the issues still remain. And coming from the police department themselves, what can we do to...
We understand.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, both of you, for coming. We appreciate it very much. At the end of public comments, I'm gonna ask the city manager to say something about it, so stick around.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Is there anyone else who'd like to address counsel? Again, this is on items that are not on the agenda. Okay. Doug, do you wanna just kind of give us a background on, on PVA and what's going on there?
Sure. Yes, I'd be glad to. Back in 2019, we had a lot of complaints about maintenance and also public safety issues, as was mentioned earlier by the young lady. And Mayor Rumener, Kate was mayor then. So we met with HUD officials, and we also talked to the property owner. As a result of that meeting, HUD decided that they would do annual inspections of the apartments rather than, I think it was every year, every second year or third year. So they started doing annual inspections. Now, they don't inspect every apartment. They, from what I understand, they do a random sample, about 10% of them. But, you know, they have to let the landlord know, and they also have to let the tenant know, because they have to get their permission to go in, similar to us. Now, we don't always get the permission. HUD does not always get permission, as same for the city. Sometimes we have to get an administrative search warrant to get in the apartments. So, you know, it sounds like we, we need to get HUD involved again. But I would like to share with the two individuals, there is a phone number, and I can share it with you, it's 877. And I'll send this out, 506-3552. And that's a HUD phone line. I called today, and it's, it's a working phone line that, that a tenant can call and give a complaint, you know.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah. And, you know, I'm sure HUD will deal with it. I also shared with counsel in a memo today, after I heard about the, the concerns, that both the HUD, as I mentioned, does inspections, as does the city. And we do inspections every two years, and we do every apartment. And so if there are violations found, the landlord is given a, a letter stating the violations, and they're given a certain time to correct it. If they're not corrected, then they do not get a rental permit. I talked to our building inspector today, our code enforcement officer, and the last inspection was in 2022, so they're due for an inspection this year. All the issues were corrected that were discovered. And of course, you know, any apartment...
Last, last time.
In 2022. The, he, you know, not every apartment had issues. Some were in good shape, some not in so good shape as I understand it. And what, and I looked at the list, most of the issues had to deal with the smoke detectors. And a lot of the smoke detectors were not there, and many of them were not operable. And probably, as you know, we require both photoelectric smoke detectors as well as ionizations. One detects smoke from smoldering fires, and the other one from, from quick flashing fires. And so, we adopted the International Property Maintenance Code many years ago, and then we added certain provisions, one being the smoke detectors. We require a photoelectric smoke detector in each bedroom, and then an ionization smoke detector in, on each floor. And of course, these, I believe, apartments are all on one floor. And, but yeah, I would encourage the folks, if they have issues, to call HUD and bring them to their attention. Someone mentioned that they thought that the landlord picked the apartments that they look at. You know, I, I don't know that that's the case. If it is, I think I would bring that to the attention of someone higher up in HUD. Because if that is the case, which I certainly hope not, that doesn't seem quite right.
Yeah. Bottom line, I'll just say to you is, the city doesn't have control over it, obviously, but I think the advice to go to HUD is a really good one. And we'll be looking very closely when we do our next inspections. Thank you for coming, we really appreciate it. And you've brought attention to the matter, and that's the key.
Okay, you bet.
All right, we will move on then, and our next item is the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be removed? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving it indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Okay, consent agenda is approved, we'll move to resolutions. You can read the first one.
A resolution declaring it necessary to levy an additional tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation as stated in Section 570919 and subsection 570519i, as amended of the Ohio Revised Code for fire and emergency medical service purposes, which levy shall be two and six tenths mils to run for 10 years, and determining to proceed with submitting to the electors the question of the additional tax levy at the general election to be held November 5, 2024.
That's quite a title.
Yeah.
Can I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Doug, you wanna talk about that?
Sure, I'll give a quick summary here. As we all know, we're running a deficit in the Fire and EMS Fund, and we need to raise additional revenue to hire additional staff, which is needed, and to address the ongoing fiscal deficit that we have in the Fire EMS Fund. So we've had several meetings with Miami University officials, and we have reached a tentative agreement with them to provide additional funding. Both parties, the city and Miami University, have agreed to contribute $1,270,000 for 10 years, each year to the Fire EMS Fund, provide additional staffing and capital equipment. This proposed funding addresses the 12-year estimated average annual fund deficit of $2,540,000. The tentative agreement is continued upon the city's passage in the general election of November 5, 2024, of a 2.6 mil 10-year Fire EMS real property tax levy. Miami University would meet its obligations with a payment in lieu of taxes. So, in order to do this, to put the property tax levy on the ballot, we needed to adopt two resolutions. We adopted the first one at our last meeting. That was a resolution in which we requested that the Butler County Auditor provide us the amount of revenue that would be raised with this levy. And she has done that. And the second resolution then is necessary, the one that we're considering tonight, to put it on the ballot. So, this is the final step, and I would recommend that you adopt this resolution tonight. And this would put this local tax levy issue on the ballot in November. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? We did have an extensive conversation at the first...
Yes.
When the first resolution came up, and so we appreciate the citizens who came forward.
Yes.
I would just say for the record that if this passes, we will be having a number of public meetings so that people can learn more about it and, and see what, what it involves.
Yeah.
Any counselors have any questions or comments? I did.
Oh.
Yeah. I think it's a crisis, and it's something that we unfortunately have to do.
Yeah, I agree. And I think that, you know, we never would have thought they would have come to the table with this, right? So it was, we had no idea that this was actually a possibility. And so as we look towards other problems we might face, such as PVA, we can look towards things that give us inspiration to empower us, that there's more that we can do.
All right. Anyone else ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We have five votes, and it passes. Thank you very much. We'll move to the second.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to waive fees adopted in the fee ordinance for the parking meter cost for the annual Oxford Masonic Lodge Car Show at a cost not to exceed $1,404.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt a resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and we've got Casey.
How you doing, buddy?
Good evening, I'm good.
It's good to see you.
So on, the Oxford Masonic Lodge is holding their second annual car and bike show in the Uptown Parks on Sunday, June 30th this year. That will be from approximately 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Following that event, the Parks and Recreation Department is going to host our Freedom Festival Parade from 5:00 to 6:00 PM. So we've kind of decided that joining forces might create a little bit more robust event for both of us. So the Masonic Lodge is requesting waiver of the parking meter fees for their portion of the event. It is a Sunday, there is no parking revenue on Sundays, and so we would recommend the waiver of the fees as written in the resolution. Happy to answer any questions you have, and I know the Masons have some representatives here that, that will answer questions or may have some more information to add as well.
Okay. We'll get them in public comment, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this issue? You can stay there if you want.
I'm just a... Why is my voice so loud?
Because you're using the microphone properly.
And you need to give your name and address, too.
Oh yeah, good.
So, last year...
Give us your name and where you're from.
Michael Hodge, 6313 Cincinnati Brookville Road.
Thank you.
Okeechobee. Last year, the parade, or the car show went over fantastic. We ended up raising $38,000 for Kramer's Playground. And this year, Marshall came to us. So we're doing another, another playground. You guys are aware I had my accident, and it set me back about a, a good 12 weeks. So it was right at the time when things were picking up. So I've gotta do some hustling here in the next month to try to bring in more funds. The business had been pretty good, I just can't get out and talk to anybody. So it's hard to catch them on the phone. But either way, I'm sure we'll make it a very memorable event. You know, last year, we had to dig a little deep in our pockets, this year we'll do the same thing. But as far as the parade and everything working in conjunction, I really was kind of, really surprised. Casey came to this way and wanted to do this, and I'm like... If Casey can't do this way and wanted to do this, and I'm like, this is perfect, because I'm going to have 2,000 people up there. He brings in another 1,500. So 3,500 people in downtown Oxford on a sunny Sunday afternoon, how much better could it get? And I charge for parking on the side streets.
And we'll, we'll pray for the sunshine.
Yes, yes, that is true. So basically, that's it. We, you know, we went with the Sunday because we figured it would be easier, but really, this event's all about the kids, it's about the charities. Um, you know, we give away a lot of money every year. This year's going to be a little bit different. We've got vendors coming in, about 300 cars, um, food trucks, not too many, just enough to offset what I think the local businesses can do. Um, it's kind of a shot in the dark right now, but we'll find out. Hopefully, nobody goes hungry. Um, so, you know, all in all, I think it's going to be a fantastic day, and, um, do got you guys in a fire truck, by the way. Tell them that.
I have not shared that yet.
Oh. Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your support of the community. Did you have anything else you wanted to say?
I, I should share that there apparently is a very special fire truck designed to haul people in for parades that you will be allowed to ride in and lead the parade this year. I'd need you to RSVP if you'll be there.
I'll be there for sure. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Is there any other comments? Yeah?
One other thing. The local nonprofits, um, are more than welcome to come out and set up booths and tables and things like that. Um, we're not charging them, so if there's anybody that knows of anyone, I know you do one, have you come back out again? Um, it was great, and we've got room for it.
Super. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. Is there any comments by council, questions? Ready to vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted. Hope you have a great, great time with the show. Okay, we'll move on to the third one.
A resolution authorizing the School Resource Officer Program Memorandum of Understanding between the Talawanda School District and the City of Oxford, and authorizing the city manager to sign the memorandum of understanding on behalf of the city.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Lieutenant?
Good evening.
Good to see you here.
This resolution is very similar to the ones you have signed in the past. Notice substantial changes. Uh, the only thing that has been changed is the rate that we are charging, uh, to be similar to what the, uh, contract wages increased back in January. Similar to that change.
Okay.
Other than that, happy to answer any questions. I believe the school board voted on this already, and it's waiting for this council to approve, so we can put it in place for next year.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay. Counselors, any questions for Jeff or comments? We've been through this before, and we certainly, uh, support that effort, so all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted. Thank you, Jeff. Okay, you can read the next one.
A resolution accepting the bid and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Hendy Incorporated for the installation of new curb, gutter, and sidewalk in conjunction with the 2024 Special Asset Program at a cost of $249,954, with a contingency amount of $24,995 for a total cost not to exceed $274,950, sorry, $45.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Mike, welcome.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of council. So this is the second of four pieces of legislation for the special assessment program. Council's already approved a resolution of necessity, uh, that put the property owners on notice of defective curb, gutter, and sidewalk. So this is a contract to make those repairs for those that have chosen not to do the work themselves, uh, but to have the city do that for them. As a matter of clarification, in my report, I, uh, this, um, contract amount is higher than what the special assessment fund, uh, what we budgeted for. So I initially recommended taking some money from Capital Improvement Fund. So after working with Mrs. Ridenhour, uh, she has money in a supplemental budget later in this agenda, uh, so there are adequate funds to cover this totally from the special assessment fund.
Super.
Uh, once the work is completed, we'll follow up later this summer with our paving resurfacing program, and then we'll settle up at the end of the year, putting the owners on notice of the actual costs and have a, uh, levy ordinance for the property owners.
Okay.
Glad to answer questions.
Thank you very much, Michael. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, thank you. Counselors, any comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted. Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you.
You can read the next one, and Mike will stick around.
A resolution accepting the bid and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with CPS Construction Group Incorporated for specified, specified repairs to the City of Oxford Walnut Street Parking Garage at a cost of $1,017,965, with a contingency amount of $18,550, sorry, $35 for a total cost not to exceed $1,036,500.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And Mike, you want to take us through this one?
Yes, sir. Uh, we've been using THP structural engineers from Cincinnati to, uh, help us and guide us in assessing the condition of the parking garage. It's about 23, 24 years old now. Uh, it has some substantial, uh, wear and corrosion on the, on the upper deck, Deck Four, and to a lesser extent on Deck Three. So we worked with THP to develop, uh, plans and specifications on what we can do to, uh, make repairs and make the garage, uh, last as long as it possibly can and be as safe as it possibly can. So we have done some work already. The southwest stair tower has already been repaired, so that's not included in this contract, uh, but there's plenty of work on Decks Three and Four. Uh, we do have a contractual agreement with the Elms Hotel that we shall provide 60 spaces. The contract does account for that, and through the summer, uh, contractor will keep 80 spaces open. So there'll be 60 for the Elms. They won't always be using them, uh, but when they're busy, they will be. Uh, but there will be some spaces open for the general public during construction. Uh, the contractor will have, uh, 124 days to complete the work, and then, uh, there is some bad weather days built into that. Uh, we did advertise for bids, and we were happy we got five, uh, bids for the project. Uh, the lowest three were extraordinarily tight. They were, uh, within $30,000 of each other. That's only .03 percent, so that, that does give us confidence that, uh, the bids are quality and, uh, somewhat higher than what we budgeted, uh, but that is the market rate. Uh, we're seeing pricing go up in all forms of, uh, construction, whether it's paving streets or concrete work or, uh, construction. Everyone's busy, there's tons of federal money funding projects. You notice in the last contract, we only had one bid, and everybody's busy, and they could not commit to our schedule. So, uh, we're happy with these firms. We did, uh, extensive background check on the company. They have, uh, glowing results from people with, uh, garages just like ours with the same type of problems. So we're recommending you approve this contract with the alternate. Uh, the alternate price was for a new waterproof membrane, uh, for the entirety of Deck Four, and that should protect the, the garage for the next decade.
Okay.
So I'll be glad to answer questions.
Super, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this resolution? Okay, counselors? So I think that waterproofing is probably the key factor, isn't it, for longevity?
Yes. When the garage was built, it was touted to, uh, have used micro silica technology, and, uh, that's great, and it lasted for a while, and we did put a membrane on, uh, 10 years ago or so, uh, but some water had infiltrated the, the upper deck and caused some corrosion of some pre-tension, uh, steel cables, so-
Okay.
That's where we are today, but we will protect it for the future.
All right, thank you very much. Any comments or questions? Mike?
I've got one question about timeline. Any idea when they would be able to start? Should we-
They believe they'll mobilize still in June.
Okay.
So, uh, we hope to be, uh, you know, it won't be a summer project-
Right.
-but it will be a first semester project, and we would hope to be done before January.
All right, fantastic.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I think we meant 3% instead of .03%. That's all.
All right, yes.
Yeah, which is still minor, but just so people know.
All right. Ready to vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, and we'll move to F.
A resolution advocating for a more robust federal climate policy to support localities most impacted by climate change.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and, um, I think we have some people to talk about that, so why don't you come up, and I'll recognize you to describe for us in Dave's absence.
I'm Ann Webster, on 190 Hilltop Road in Oxford, uh, and I'm here with, um, Carla. Um, we're here, um, to provide some background for our, the resolution that, um, we worked with David Prizer on, and we're very excited, um, that it might be adopted. Um, we are representing Citizens Climate Lobby, which is an international grassroots, nonpartisan organization that seeks to create the political will for sustainable, uh, for sustainable climate by advocating for effective climate legislation. Uh, it trains and supports volunteers like us, um, to build relationships with their elected representatives in order to influence climate policy. It also seeks to create a broad, sustainable foundation to drive climate action in America, Canada, and throughout the world. Established in 2007, the goal of CCL is to build the political support across party lines to put a price on carbon, specifically a revenue-neutral carbon fee and dividend on a national level. Uh, each year, CCL travels to Washington, DC to lobby, um, all elected officials on climate policy. This year, our primary ask is to support, um, the Prove It Act, which is, um, Senate Bill 1836, and permitting reform, uh, legislation that is predictive to our goal of a price on carbon. Uh, a team from our district, including myself and Carla, uh, will be joined by other, uh, Ohio CCLers, and we will be meeting with, um, staff in, um, our representative Warren Davidson's office, Ohio Eight, um, next Tuesday. As part of this meeting, we will be presenting letters and, um, of, uh, support for the work in general from cons, individual constituents in our district, uh, as well as trusted messengers. Um, these are groups that, uh, and individuals within the district who represent a larger, significant group of people in the district. We feel that this is important for legislators to be reminded that people in their district care about climate change and expect action by Congress.
Thank you. Carla, would you introduce yourself?
Yeah, hi, I'm Carla Blackmar Rice, and I live at 400 West Vine Street in Oxford.
Thank you, Carla.
Um, so just to follow up on what Ann said, both Oxford and Miami University have made very powerful commitments on climate and, and are undertaking significant work to shore up the resilience of our community as we face the multitude of challenges, um, that climate destabilization will bring. In addition to the strong local work our city has done to adopt a climate action plan, we were just featured on NPR for this, we have been competitive in receiving funding from our federal government for climate mitigation and adaptation. Our wonderful staff, the dedication of our council in ensuring that this work is staff, and our community's concern and commitment on climate action are essential for, um, us being the leader that we are in our region as we confront this great challenge. While there is much that we are doing on a local level, the challenge of climate change is a global challenge, requiring action at all levels of government. Approving this resolution sends a message up the chain of command to our representative in Congress, helping to remind him that we expect our federal government to support local governments like ours as we take on this challenge. This action reflection, reflects a similar resolution adopted by council on January 15th of 2019, supporting carbon fee and dividend. We brought a paper copy of this resolution to our CCL meeting with Warren Davidson's office back in 2019, and that helped to raise the voices of our Oxford constituents. Since that 2019 resolution, we have seen meaningful action in Congress with the passage of the Infrastructure Bill and the Inflation Reduction Act. This legislation creates local resources for decarbonization and adaptation. We hope that you will pass this resolution today to help us continue and encourage our representatives to act on climate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate your coming. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, counselors?
I think we should have had a national, uh, carbon tax, uh, revenue-neutral one, like many other countries have, um, probably two to three decades ago, so I absolutely support that, and obviously, everything else towards addressing climate change that we talk about so often, so fully in support of it.
I, I think we do need to give a lot of credit to our Climate Action Steering Committee for coming up with this, so we appreciate the work that regular citizens supporting the future of Oxford. Appreciate it. Anyone else?
Yeah, thank you, Carla, and your tireless effort towards this, and I think that, you know, what we've done in Oxford, you can drive around and see that we have embraced solar energy, right? We solarized Oxford, we're going to keep on going. Um, and for me, I grew up in an oil boom town, right? And so we know that the oil prices fluctuate depending on what's happening with OPEC and the oil cartels that are in the Middle East, so why do that? Why are we so, why not be independent? We need to own our own energy. You can own it by the house, by the business. So that just makes more sense, and on top of it, we have embraced property rights, right? You should have the ability to put large-scale solar arrays on your property. Farmers want to have solar arrays, and our state has gone against their property rights and violated that, so please take that to Representative Davidson. Um, and as we see how much flooding is happening, that is something that is, we're flooding where we have never flooded before.
Yep.
So, and, and our home insurance and property insurance is going up because we know it's just going to get worse, so-
And there's a lot of places that don't have any insurance coverage.
Yes, and so it is fiscally irresponsible to not do the right thing about, um, us having local energy. So thank you so much.
And good luck with Representative Davidson. Are you ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Never know. He might listen to his constituents at some point. All right. Did I say that out loud?
You did.
I apologize. Um, let's move to ordinances and, uh, first reading.
An ordinance authorizing the tax budget for the year 2025 and directing that that same be transmitted to the Butler County Auditor.
Okay, and Heidi, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and counselors. Um, tonight I bring to you the annual tax budget to be submitted for the 2025 coming year, um, to the Butler County Tax Commission, that's re, as required by the Ohio Revised Code. Uh, approval of the legislative body is required by, by July 15th and is due to the county by July 20th, so second reading, um, on July, I'm sorry, June 18th, we will include a public hearing. Um, the, the tax, this is essentially a preliminary budget estimate for next year. Beginning in August, we will undertake our normal detailed line item budget analysis and preparation. We have prepared this 2025 preliminary tax budget with an approximate 0% increase over the 2024 budget.
Okay, thank you very much, Heidi. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolu, this ordinance, excuse me? Okay. Counselors have any questions or comments? Something we do every year, so I think we're ready for it. Something we do every year, so I think we're ready for it. So this will come up for those watching, this comes up at our next meeting, which is when we'll have a motion and a second and a vote. Okay, the second first reading.
An ordinance approving a conditional use permit application to allow for a retail use exceeding 15,000 square feet in the general business district for the purpose of accommodating a new Tractor Supply Company store on property located at 5728 College Corner Pike, Oxford, Ohio 45056, with conditions.
Okay. Sam, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Delivering a recommendation from the Planning Commission for a conditional use. The Tractor Supply proposed location is really a perfect fit. It's out near the Walmart and the John Deere dealership.
What a great location.
So because of the way the zoning code is written, it requires a conditional use because the floor area is over 15,000 square feet. Otherwise, you probably never would have seen it, but it's 21,000 square feet. So because of that, then the conditional use process looks at where the potential impacts to the surrounding properties. So we went through everything with a fine-tooth comb as we normally do, and they are planting 114 trees. They're dedicating a little sliver of right-of-way. They've got some outdoor storage identified, fairly typical farm surface type of store, so they are willing to extend the multi-use path along College Corner Pike and set aside some funds for sidewalk at some point in the future along Todd Road. So they've been very open to all the feedback, and much of which would have been required even without the conditional use. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. There's the site plan, and then you can see the little sliver of right-of-way, which we are kind of excited about the possibility. Not sure what decade that might happen, but there would be a potential for a roadway going around the north side of Oxford at some point. The thoroughfare plan shows that approximately in that location, in order to do that, realigning the Todd Road intersection would be one way to do that. It happened to be a portion of the property that they're not able to utilize anyway because of the way the grading is, so they're going to dedicate that. So it would be an undeveloped area for now, so.
Okay.
And then the next slide takes their site plan. Mr. Zachary Moore kind of colorized it for you to see, and you can, you can get an idea of the building footprint and the green space and the parking area. And they, it's a, about a 13-acre parcel right now, so there would be a subdivision in the future, a commercial subdivision that would split off the four acres that they would, that they would need, and then the rest could be developed in the future. So they've got a stub roadway with an access system that would allow for whoever develops the rest of the property to access that in the future, so they've thought about that as well.
Okay. Did the Planning Commission approve it and support it?
Yes. Planning Commission recommended it, and it has all the conditions in place, and really, were not any changes from the staff recommendation, so went pretty smooth with the Planning Commission.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? If you think about it and you have a comment, you can bring it at the next meeting, because that's when we'll have the motions and we'll have the votes on it. So we appreciate it, and I for one, I'm really looking forward to this. I think it's a great project. We've gone to that store in Hamilton a number of times. It's great.
I buy all my overalls at Tractor Supply.
There you go. There you go. So it's a good store. All right. Now we move to second readings.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 3750, supplemental budget ordinance number three, to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year 2024.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Heidi, welcome back.
Hello again. Excuse me. We do have a couple changes tonight from the first reading. As Mike explained, the, the additional funding required for the parking garage repairs, we plan to take a, include a transfer from the Capital Improvement Fund to the Parking Improvement Fund. As you know, at the end of 2023, we transferred an additional $781,250 from the General Fund to the Capital Improvement Fund for future capital expenses. So we're asking for the 250 come from the Capital Improvement Fund to transfer to the Parking Improvement Fund. We also, as Mike explained, the cost estimate for the sidewalk curving gutter assessments came in higher. With a budget of $200,000, additional appropriation is needed, and the amount of $74,945, this special assessment fund balance is sufficient to allow for the additional funds.
Okay. Thank you very much. Counselors, this is on page 162 and 163, the staff report. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? You've been very talkative tonight. Appreciate you being here anyway. Counselors, have any questions or comments? Okay. You can call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes. Okay, the ordinance is adopted. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Heidi. All right, we'll move to announcements and communications, and we'll begin with City Manager Doug Elliott.
Thank you. As you know, the city contracts with the Regional Income Tax Agency, RITA, to administer our local income tax. RITA, by the way, administers the income tax of over 422, excuse me, 422 Ohio jurisdictions. For us, this has proven very effective and efficient. I think I'll get a little sip of tea here. In 2023, then, RITA collected $10,926,284 total for the General Fund and the Fire EMS Fund, with an administrative cost of $86,223. So this cost represents less than 1% of the city's collection total. We have an agreement with RITA which calls for a 3% retainage, so the city will receive a refund amount of $240,463, and this refund amount will be deposited in our General Fund and Fire EMS Fund. And that's all I have this evening.
They can use it.
Yes, most certainly.
Thank you very much. Mike? Okay. Jeff?
Just two quick reminders. This week, we'll have a PCR RC meeting up here in these chambers at 7:00 PM. This is a special meeting. The last meeting ran long, so they moved their data collection meeting to this week. And then, beginning on Sunday, Buckeye Boys State will start over at Miami University. That will run all through next week, so you may see a plethora of OSP cars and other dignitaries coming into town throughout the week as part of that event.
Okay. Thank you very much. Heidi?
I just want to say one thing. I am, as we always close out the, the school year, I always want to give kudos to my staff. They do a tremendous job. We had over 500 move-outs switching in and out this year, so I just thank the utility staff.
Yeah. It's a lot of work for them. Chief?
Officer.
Okay, Casey?
Thank you. A couple weeks from now, while we're all here in this council meeting, there'll also be about 800 people camping in tents at the Tri-Property for the Great Ohio Bicycle Adventure, which is coming to town June 17th, 18th, and 19th. So when you drive by on that Monday, don't be alarmed when all of a sudden you see a bunch of people popping up their tents and staying the night there. The theme this year is called the Donut Quest, so there'll be donut-themed things going on all over with, with that, and we're teaming up with Enjoy Oxford to provide some activities and, and live music and things like that while they're here in town. So they're expecting between 800 and 1,200 total people, bike riders and, and others that come along with them. Some are staying in hotels, some are staying at the rec center indoors, and of course, the majority are staying in tents on the Tri-Property, so just want to let you know that's coming.
It's a big deal.
It's a big deal.
Thank you, Casey. Sam?
Update on the restroom project that you authorized us to move forward on recently. There were some comments at the council meeting about kind of surveying the business owners, so I spent an afternoon doing that. The business owners on that quadrant of the uptown area, out of the eight, there were two that had some concerns about visibility and proximity to their business, blocking visibility and the, the way it would look as viewed from their business storefront. We realized that it's difficult to find a place to do that that would comply with everything, so we're planning to move forward with the location that you've already authorized. We wanted to give you an update that we did listen and, and provide an update to those business owners, so the next time you will see this will probably be a contract for construction, hopefully, but it'll probably be sometime next year.
Oh, it's next year.
We, we haven't completed the design yet.
Okay.
So that will be the next. So depending on what the cost threshold of that, you may not see it actually at a council meeting. So we'll continue to put it in our staff reports and our written reports to keep you updated. If at any point you want to have something as a discussion item, we can do that as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Hi, Ben.
Good evening. Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Mike?
Just big props to Fire and EMS for last month's fire at PVA. That could have been far worse than it was, and I think thanks to a quick response, we were able, you know, you were able to minimize the damage and, and as few people unsheltered as possible, so great job.
Shut down.
I want to thank the two PVA residents who came out tonight to make comments because that was an act of bravery.
It was.
They are under threats of eviction anytime there is any type of complaint, so they are doing this not only for themselves, but for the rest of their tenants. There were dozens of people who wanted to come, and they got really nervous and backed out for fear of threat of eviction. So, so I just want to thank them so much in that we, I want this to be the year that we actually do something about it. Like, it is unacceptable to say that there is nothing that we can do, and we know that, we know what they're saying is true. We all know that. The police are out there all the time. Fire EMS is out there all the time. We know that they are not lying or exaggerating, and whenever we look at why we're looking at this, we just think that the families that live there should deserve to feel safe, right? They deserve to feel safe. We know that this is, this property, because of mismanagement, has been a drain on resources, both police and fire and EMS, and that is completely inappropriate. When we look at our neighboring cities in Cincinnati and Hamilton, what have they done to maybe assist with the tenants? And so researching it, they've looked at properties, chronic nuisance ordinances, and so the purpose, if I can read from the Cincinnati one, was to, to work in partnership with the owners and operators of multifamily premises to address the negative impacts caused by chronic nuisance activities and improve the vitality of neighborhoods by addressing criminal activity. And then I look at Hamilton, they, how do they define chronic nuisance? And these are all back from like 2018, 2019 or so, when their ordinances went into play. For Hamilton, when three or more chronic nuisance activities have happened at a property on separate days during a 30-day period, such as an activity is any criminal or delinquent act as defined by local or state laws where the person is a perpetrator of a crime rather than the victim. When a felony drug offense under Ohio laws occurred on the, occurred on the property. So these are things that we can do something about, and what Cincinnati has done, they established this ordinance for the chronic nuisance for the property, and then Cincinnati is holding true to their word, and they are suing certain nuisance properties, and that what they have said is that we are trying to work with the property owners. We want them to do right by their tenants and just do their job, right? Make sure it's safe. Don't allow migrants going around using drugs. Like, make it safe for the kids that live there. So I really look forward to working together so we can try to get this on the books and know that we can do something about it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I was going to say something similar, and, and I noticed when City Manager Elliott was talking about calling HUD, the gentleman mouthed, "We've done that." And so it seems like they may have exhausted a lot of the avenues they feel are available to them, so if we can get creative within the bounds of what we can do as a city, I support that. I'm excited for the parade. I'm excited for the synergy between the car show and the parade. You know, there's never a way to do anything that pleases everyone, and, and I just want to say that there have been a few people in the community who shared with me their disappointment that the parade is not happening in July. It is happening in June. So some people said they would write in about that. We'll probably get some things written in about that for the next meeting, but I just wanted to sort of put that out there. And then finally, we had a call for murals. The Public Arts Commission had a call for murals to paint the mural by the overpass on the Och Trail, and we got some amazing applications. I am so excited for what's possible in this community in terms of public art. PACO, the Public Arts Commission of Oxford, is meeting on Monday in the municipal building on the first floor at 4 o'clock, and we will be talking about our top picks. We're going to be narrowing it down to three semifinalists, and then they're going to pitch to us, and we'll pick an artist to do a large mural by the Och Trail, and I'm super excited. So thank you to staff who've helped with that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the residents of Parkview Arms have a right to feel safe and secure and treated fairly in dealings with management, and I think I support the city's efforts to make sure that's the case, and I think we might have to get creative and look at what other cities have done or come up with their own solutions to help address that, but I hope we do that sincerely.
I agree, and I don't think these people should have to put up with what they're putting up with. And so we should look into what kinds of ordinances are appropriate. There's not a, you know, direct things that we can do because we don't own it. It's privately owned, but they still have to follow the, you know, proper ordinances, and I think these examples that Vice Mayor talked about are worth us investigating, so let's, let's take a look at that and, and see what we can do. Okay? That's all I have. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Thanks to all of you for coming. Appreciate it.